We'll call the meeting to order now and let's all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, I'll just note for roll call that we have all of our board members present tonight. And I wanted to announce that we did have an executive session before tonight's meeting to discuss personnel. I do have a number of forums for public comment tonight, so before we get into the main body of the meeting, I will hear the public comment. So first, I have Danielle Leach.
Is this on? Is it on? Yeah. I'm actually here on behalf of the Pots Grove Athletic Booster Club. This is not in relation with my husband over there, who is the president, but I'm very, very involved with the Pots Grove Athletic Booster Club. And I'm counting down the days. We have 14 days left until we are done. And unfortunately, we've had nobody step up to try to take over this role. And I just want everybody to understand that this is a huge role for our student athletes. Like, there's 24 teams now. We have, this year alone, we have put back to these teams over $14,000. And in the previous years, they average about $10,000 per year that we give back to these students. And I think that it's a very sad shame that this program will die if somebody doesn't come in and take it over. So, my last and final plea, I know many of you still have students here in the schools, so maybe some of the board members or people that the board knows would be interested in stepping in and taking over. And Al and I do live across the street. It's not like we won't help. We will clearly help whoever takes over to get them up and running, but I think it's important and this program should not die. That's it.
Thank you, Danielle. And I just want to say too, just, it's a very rewarding experience to be a volunteer in the school district and help these students. It is a lot of work and a lot of hours, and they go by very easily, in my experience, and I'm probably speaking for Al and Danielle too. I mean, it's a lot of work, but it's honorable work. It's, and it's not, it's not like anybody can't do it. So I really, I can't imagine somebody's not gonna take over the reins for you guys, but thank you. I know the Booster Club has just boomed since you two were involved, and hopefully you can get some people to take it over, and you can tutor them and train them to run it the same way and keep getting better. I mean, it's hugely important to our kids. So, thank you for the years of service. It's been like four or five years, right? Yep. Thanks. Yep, I know all about that too, but sometime, yeah, it takes a long time. It takes, I mean, people are very intimidated sometimes by, you know, what it might take, but it's not really that hard to learn, and it's very rewarding work, so. Okay, I have Linda Bonkowski.
My name is Lynda, is this working? Can you hear me? All right, thank you. My name is Linda Bonkowski, and I am a library aide at the middle school. I've been thinking about how the library would operate without an aide since I was told on April 18th that my position is being eliminated at the end of the year. I want you all to know that the decision to get rid of this aide is personal. It's going to affect every person, both students and teachers, who use the library every day. The library is not only a place where students go to get books. Getting books into the hands of our students is very important, and they need guides on how to find books that will pique their interest. They also need help on how to use technology safely and effectively. We have students who come to the library daily because it's a safe place, quiet, and they can work on their projects, read or tinker electronics, technology, I'm sorry. I pull books for teachers who need them to support their curriculum. Who will do this next year? By eliminating the library aide, students will not have the access to the library when they need it. We have pride ourselves with being open all the time because our students cannot always schedule when they need assistance. Our librarian teaches classes all day. I know turning the students away is not what we want to do, but they will not have a choice. The middle school library has an inventory of over 15,000 books and electronics and equipment. The librarian cannot effectively control this inventory without an aide. Items will be lost and in the cost of district money. Eliminating this position is short sighted and not the answer to saving money on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Cheryl Butaro next.
Good evening, everybody. I am Cheryl Butaro. I just retired from Pots Grove last June as elementary librarian. I was here for 38 years. Came out of retirement when I was on a trip this, in April, and I was given a text, sent a text about the elimination of the library assistants. And I could not wait to get home to come out of retirement and come and try and convince you to do otherwise. I spent all of my years, 36 out of the 38, traveling. I was at Lower, West, and Ringing Rocks. All of my years at Ringing Rocks, and then at Lower and at West. I just can't imagine not having an aide when I was working. They did everything for me when I was traveling. In one building, I had left things for the other, for my library assistant to do, so everything was ready for me when I came back to teach with my students. I already addressed, I think, all the board members. I sent you an email about all the responsibilities of the assistants, that they, what they perform when the librarian is in and out of the buildings. Some of the responses I received back from my letter, I could see that many of you were unaware of the vital role that these library assistants play in our schools and in running a successful program. And actually, some, I think some of you were told that the librarians were actually on board with this decision, which was, could not be further from the truth. So, I am here on behalf of our current librarians, assistants, teachers, and especially the students. Am I passionate about this? Yes. Is it personal? Yes. But losing our aides is most definitely personal for our students and their accessibility to books in our wonderful libraries. The librarians strive to support every school curriculum, but especially reading, and especially at the level that I taught at K through 5, and then, ending my career at the K through 2 centers. They can do this, they can support all of the reading and the curriculum, because they can devote all their time to the students, knowing that their assistants are taking care of all the clerical work in the back office and the back office chores. There's not, there was nothing more rewarding to me as a librarian than enriching our students with wonderful literature and watching their expressions when I read them stories. And after a lesson, the students were so excited, they were ready to go get their books, and everything was running smoothly because my assistants had already checked in all of the returned books, and they were ready for new ones to be checked out. And I was free to help students find the books that they were interested in while the assistants were there checking them out for them. Without the assistants, this process is really going to deteriorate. The lessons are going to be much shorter, and because they're going to have to spend time behind the desk checking out books to students. I'm sure you all know that there are many statistics that show a well-staffed library program includes, improves standardized test scores. Just today, I had the librarians look up how many books have been checked out at, I was at the Rocks and at West. And at Ringing Rocks, so far this year, as of today, 17,236 books were checked out of that school. And at West, there were 11,053 books checked out. It's a lot of books to check in and check out and re-shelve. So, I'm here to ask all of you, is cutting the money that are earned by these five hourly employees really worth denying every single student and teacher in Pots Grove the opportunity to have access to their libraries at any time, on any day? I have always been proud of Pots Grove's commitment to the libraries, and I've always loved every minute of my job here. My hope is for our students, for our students, is that we will not take a step backward and that this issue can be decided very soon. Thank you.
Dawn Renner.
Good evening, board. My name is Dawn Renner. I have two kids in the district. I have a 4th grader and an 8th grader. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a former supervisor of a telecom company, so I've dealt with budgetary concerns along with the hiring and firing of employees. I currently work for the district up at Ringing Rocks, so I see this issue as two-sided from a parent and an employee's standpoint. I want you all to imagine going to the doctor's office and not seeing the nurse. Imagine walking into a school or an office building and not seeing the secretary or the receptionist. Imagine many of your own jobs without your secretaries. Do you think you could do your job without your right-hand person or so-called sidekick? I mean, who is Batman without Robin? That's exactly what we're here tonight to discuss. Our librarians need their aides. Our librarians, the aides are a central part of the functionality of the library. Now, you may ask, what does a librarian aide do, and why are they so important? First of all, the librarians select the order of the books. It is the aide's job to process the order. This consists of adding Mylar jackets, stamping each book, adding a barcode, adding call numbers, creating a digital record for the book in the system, and then shelving the book. This process needs to be completed for hundreds of books each year. On top of that, their duties consist of interacting with the students. On average, there are approximately 22 kids per class. There are six classes per library day. The students have the opportunity to check out two books per day. That equals 264 books checked out each library day. 264. And that does not include the children that use the library each and every day to meet their needs. You may think that that's the end of their duties, but that's not the end. They have to check out the books that are returned back into the system before the students check out their new books. Why? Because if a student fails to return his or her books, then they may not get new books, and a late slip needs to go home. This return process needs to be done during library class. The librarian does not have the time to check in books along with teach the class and assess the SLOs, which are the PA State mandated student learning objectives. All in all, when you include books being checked in and out, there is the potential of processing 528 books per day. That doesn't even include cleaning all those said books. This is a task that would be very difficult for the librarian to complete without their aide, especially for the librarians that have split their time between two schools. I have personally witnessed days when our aide was out sick with no sub and the books were piled up. I could not even fathom that happening on a daily basis. So now, I implore you, please do not get rid of our librarian aides. They keep our libraries running smoothly with their knowledge, dedication, and consistency. They're an integral part of our library's ability to function properly. The librarians would be hard-pressed to succeed without the aides. You want our school to stay competitive and bring more people into the district, have a high literacy rate? How do you achieve this? By having a well-maintained library with competent staff to help fulfill the students' literacy needs. The schools are now being run like businesses, and with that comes budgetary concerns and cuts, but this is not the place to do it. I invite you to come visit one of our libraries for a day and see what our aides do, and you too will see why our Batman needs our Robin. Thank you.
Kadira Garfield.
My name is Amaya Cousins.
My name is Kadira Garfield, and we're both 9th graders at this school.
Yep.
We heard that the library aides were gonna get cut, and like, that's not a good idea.
We're just here to like, inform you that they are very helpful. Like, personally, I'm not a reader, so I wouldn't know what to do when I go into a library. I would go straight to Miss, one of the aides inside of the teacher, so I would run the class, and then we just got in the right direction.
And last year, when I was at the middle school, Ms. Cusiera was our reading Olympics, like, director and stuff. But if I had a question, like, while I was in a class or something like that, and I needed to talk to her, she was already teaching a class, so I would go straight to Mrs. B, the first person I saw when I walked in the library. And she always greeted me with like, a smile, and she would talk to me and like, help me figure out if I needed to get a new book, if, how far I was in the book, and stuff like that. And she was always helpful, but I can't think of a time where like, I asked her a question and she didn't have an answer that was useful. And like, like Amaya said, when like, Ms. Cusiera is doing things and you need to speak with her, and you can't because we can't interrupt like, class and stuff like that, Mrs. B is like, the only of course we can go to, and she always has an answer.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. So, I just want to say on the whole thanks for everyone who came out to talk to the board about this issue tonight. We appreciate your feedback and, and your concern and your passion, so thank you. I'm gonna do, I'm gonna hand the meeting over to Dr. Shirk now for presentations, recognitions, and awards.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Tonight, we have a list of celebrations regarding our students who go to Pots Grove High School. Our first set of recognition is from the Career and Technology School, our Western Center. We have, there you go, this is Grim. You have your shirt on tonight.
Yes.
Tonight, we have Brittany Spicer, who is here tonight, along with Jessica Costanzo and Abby Reschneider. And what I'd like to do, I'm gonna, I'd like to read a little bit of a bio on what they've accomplished, is Justin Lopez here, did he show up by any chance? Okay, great, super. So everybody's here. Excellent. So, first of all, Brittany, Brittany and Justin are juniors in the Health Science Technology Program. Together, they competed as a team in forensic medicine, where they received a gold medal at the Hostess State Leadership Conference. Their competition consisted of a written test and then a round two event, where they had to analyze a case study and then write a conclusion. So tonight, we want to recognize these two for their excellence in health science and technology. And Dr. Harney, we have two gifts for them from the district, if you come up, please? Absolutely, Mrs. Grim, please, feel free. Our next recipient, Jessica Costanzo, is a senior in the Dental Occupations Program. Jessica competed in the Dental Assisting for Skills USA. Jessica received a gold medal at the district-level competition and had placed 5th at the state level. Her competition was a written test composed of 50 questions and then 10 hands-on skills that related to working as a dental assistant. The competition included chairside assisting, preparation of dental materials, infection control and emergency, laboratory and office procedures. Skills evaluated include administrative, clinical, and laboratory, laboratory in the dental areas. Congratulations, Jess, come on up. Very good. Abby Reschneider competed in the job interview at the FCC LA Family Career and Community Leaders of America State Competition in March. Abby put together a career portfolio showcasing her lessons and knowledge of early childhood education. She competed in a mock interview and shared her portfolio with judges. Abby received a gold medal, and her score was the highest in the competition, which placed her in the National FCC LA Team to represent Pennsylvania in Atlanta, Georgia this summer. Congratulations, Abby. Come on down. Dr. Z, you might as well stay up here. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to recognize the high school jazz band champions. They are led by their director, Sean Campiano, and we are proud of what they've accomplished this year. And Sean, if you'd come up and celebrate your group with us, that would be great.
Thank you all for being here, and thank you for taking the time to recognize the dedication to excellence that our jazz students have been putting forth. This is usually a year of readjustment and change. As some of you might know, this is my first year here at Pots Grove, and this year has been anything but readjustment and change. These students have been pursuing quality across the board in every single one of their ensembles since day one. Their marching band received the highest score and placement they have in six years in the cavalcaded band circuit. The concert band just went to an adjudication this weekend and received a superior rating, first place in their division and first place overall. And now, our jazz band students are coming home with their first tournament indoor association championship victory. So these students have worked extremely hard. They have pushed through a difficult circumstance and persevered better than I think any of us could have imagined, so I just appreciate your time recognizing their great efforts, and we look forward to the future.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. At this time, we'd like to recognize Patrick Agnew, high school swimming, in the 2017-18 District One Champion in the 50 and 100 Free. Named to the Pioneer Athletic Conference Team, named to the Mercury's Swimmer of the Year, named the Mercury Swimmer of the Year, and the Red Eagle Swimmer of the Year. Named the Class AA District One Swimmer of the Meet, first time in Pots Grove history that this was awarded to, to us and to Patrick. Two-time PIAA State Championship Qualifier this year, was a two-time state medalist with a fourth in the 50 and an eighth in the 100 Free. Will attend Bloomsburg University to continue his athletic and academic career. Coach Triver's here tonight to recognize Patrick and say a few words. Coach?
Thanks. Unfortunately, Patrick can't make it tonight. His deck hockey team was playing the championship game, and he just won. I'd like to thank the board and the Booster Club for keeping swimming alive here, Mr. Durenzo for his help. I'd also like to thank Diane Bush and Jeff Bush for donating money for the record board that will hopefully hang in the hallway here, which will have Patrick's name on it three times. Once for the 2016 relay, for the 300 relay, 200 free relay that went to states. In 2017, he took first in the 50 and 100 at districts, and then he went on, he wanted to, what could you do after that? So his goal for the 2018 season was to make districts in every event, which he did at the Upper Perk Meet, which was our last meet. At the Upper Perk Meet, his name will stand on their board too, now that he has their pool record. He went on to defend his two titles in District One Championship, and then went on to states, as you heard. So that would total his three records here. He's a very humble and modest swimmer. He actually was in the locker room, having no idea that he would be the swimmer of the meet at the district. And he will be trading in those wings for fur and become a husky at Bloomsburg next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. We'd also like to recognize our Pioneer Athletic Track Champions this year, Anna Myers and Mia Rose. Anna, high school girls' track and field, 2018 Pioneer Athletic Conference Champion in the girls' javelin, PIAA District One Qualifier for the 2018 season. Anna holds a javelin school record that she broke two times this season. She was named all-conference in 17 and in 18. This year, Anna was undefeated in dual meets in the javelin, and will attend Montgomery County Community College in the fall. And Coach Grim, you're here tonight to say a few words? Feel free to come up.
First of all, I'd like to thank the administration and the board for your continued support of Pots Grove Athletics, of which Anna is a small part of the big picture as far as Pots Grove Athletics are concerned. But as far as Anna's concerned, it doesn't do a coach more proud to watch a young athlete come in as a freshman, having no idea really what direction she wanted to go into. Another assistant coach sent her over to me, said, "I think I got a javelin thrower for you, see what she has." Put a javelin in her hands, said, "Yeah, I think we might have something here." And every year after that, every spring, Anna and I get together, said, "What's our goals for this year?" It's like, "Well, let's just make it to the championship meet and see where we go." Met that goal, then we set our goals to the districts, and we accomplished big things in the district championships this year. All along, in back of my mind, I think, I think we got a school record holder here. Just gonna have to see if we can pull it out of her. And took us midway through to her senior year, but once she broke that 14-year-old record, every time she picked up a javelin, every meet after that, she just continued to break that record. And she surely did shatter. I mean, she shattered that record by well over 10 feet. And the previous record, like I said, stood for 14 years, and I don't think I'm gonna be around for another 14 years coaching anybody else that'll try to break that record again. But I cannot be more proud of Anna as a coach, to see her rise to, to become the best, the best javelin thrower that Pots Grove High School has ever had. And I can't be any more proud of that. Thank you for that. Thank you for that.
Yeah, we have another one. Coach, you wanna, you wanna stay for Mia Rose too? Well, you can, part of staff, part of staff, absolutely. High School Girls Track and Field, 2018 Pioneer Athletic Conference Champion in the High Jump and Triple Jump. She is a district qualifier in the High Jump Triple Jump where she finished fourth overall and the four-by-100 relay. She will compete in the PIAAA State Championship this weekend at Shippensburg University. Mia was undefeated in the Triple Jump and the Dual Meets for the second straight season. She will be attending Morgan State University in the fall. Congratulations. You snuck up on me.
Once, once again, you know, Mia, Mia is a, you know, a product of, of hard work and dedication in the sport of track and field. And as a coach and as part of the staff, can I, again, be more proud of her and her accolades that, that she's accomplished throughout her career and, and going to further her career and, and at college level. And again, thank you. Thank you.
As we conclude this, this part of our presentations and recognitions, we just want to thank and congratulate all our champions, champions at all of our different levels and all of our different activities and events. It's, it's a point of pride for us at Pots Grove High School and, and the district. So thank you all once again. Okay, we'll move into the report of the superintendent. Okay, this time, Section 5, we'd like to talk, do our action items regarding personnel. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve all personnel items 5.1 through 5.7. Any questions or comments on any of these? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Moving on to action items for business. Action items for business.
Computers are frozen, so if we can keep them separate, I have to check if I had any.
No, it, it got reshuffled, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, no, you went, yeah, it did, that's. Okay, 6.1 is the 2018-19 Fall/Winter Sports Athletic Bid. Does everybody have that up? Okay, everybody's good? Okay, I just wanted to. So we have a motion and a second to approve this bid for athletic supply vendors. That's the Fall/Winter and Spring Athletic Bid for a total of $44,204.22. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right.
Okay, the next item is Selective Board Treasurer, sorry.
For the 2018-19 School Year. I'd like to make a motion for Patty Grimm to be School Board Treasurer. Motion and a second for Patty to serve her 29th year as the treasurer. Forever treasurer. Thank you, Patty. And you're, I guess you're okay with that, right? All right, so all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you, Patty. 6.3, MCIU Board of Directors. We are asking this board to approve the MCIU Board of Directors as presented. Does everyone have a, we have a motion and a second. Does everyone have a copy and they've had a chance to review it? Okay. So any questions or comments before we go? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Moving on to action item 6.4, the Elementary Projector Project. We're asked that the board award the contract for replacement of projectors in the elementary schools to E+ Technologies in the amount of $370,599 as presented. Okay. Yeah, we had a motion and a second. Do you have any questions or comments?
Question, the real question was you're on the committee. Same question I had last time. You guys went through the new procedure and stuff. Did you guys recommend us to do this today?
We'd come to a general consensus to agree to the proposal subject to your taking a look at it and, and coming to the conclusion that you were in fact in support of it. Mr. Nipper, Mr. Nipper, I'm sorry. That's why we're glasses, guys, because he's, can't tell I'm looking at.
Turn this thing on when I'm supposed to. I think the question was at the time, this is part of a larger project, overall replacements. And I guess what the annualized cost of that overall replacement's gonna be, because there's gonna be a certain number of failures per year. We're looking at an annual, we're looking at a replacement eventually, a replacement cycle that will be eventually continuing and ongoing. What's it gonna be every year?
Mr. Nipper, it's a, this, 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 this cost will be to replace all the projectors in K5. And the, we're, we're expecting to get five to six years out of this, this project.
Okay, but my question is, in the future, you're gonna be replacing 20, I would guess 20% of them, right?
But it would not be the entire units.
No, it wouldn't be the entire units.
Correct.
So we're gonna look, we're looking at an annual cost in the future, not of $37,000, but a, what's the replacement cost gonna be in the future? And that was my, I think that was my question.
No, it, it would be whatever the, it wouldn't be a yearly, this is a capital project, so we're, we're gonna do this. I don't know what the recommendation would be in five years from now. So it, it might be, we might be replacing them individually.
Yeah.
But I don't think we can.
I think that's understood. I, I guess what I'm asking is what's the maintenance cost of this gonna be on an annual basis, including the replacements?
After five years or prior to?
After five years.
I, I don't know if I have that answer, to be honest with you, yeah. I mean, the units are approximately $1,400 now. If, maybe we can just get a bulb, maybe we can send it back and get it repaired. I don't think we've really, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Bicker, but I think this is a, this is brand-new units right now. Our, our objective is to get five to six years or more out of them. And then if we have to replace, we only replace the unit. If we just replace the bulb, it'd be, it'd be more of a, could be a unit-by-unit project rather than a whole.
Yeah, this is eventually gonna show up as a maintenance cost. And my, maybe I misunderstood.
Maybe, there could be a maintenance cost as, as we move forward with it, or a replacement cost.
Yeah.
How much of this is installation cost, not just the price of them?
51%.
51% is installation.
So I think, Bill, you just, Dr. Scherk, you just answered my question. The price of a, the integrated projector is about $1,400. Is that correct?
High 13s, yeah, $1,377.
The traditional projector, is that the price you sent us? That was 900?
$909.
$909. So it's about a $500 difference. And how many are we purchasing?
119.
So what's 500 times 119, somebody?
Think of it this way, it's $100, $100 a year per classroom to allow the teachers to be that much more effective.
No, 500 a year?
No, $500 over the course of five years, minimum. That's how it'll be, $100 a year to be that much, you know, just in time savings alone. Yeah, to me, that's.
Okay. I'm against this purchase for a couple of reasons. I can't find, I thought I took note of when we were told why there was a need for this to be done now all at once, all the projectors removed. Come to find out, we have 28% of the projectors K5 not working. So we have 72% of the projectors working. I do not believe it is fiscally responsible to take down projectors, especially when it's 72% of them, that are working just fine, to have the best of the best. I have seen this projector in use. I think it is a great projector and classrooms would benefit. I've also seen the, the traditional projectors used and have used them quite efficiently. $371,000 is a lot of money to spend. I don't believe this is a wise use. I also don't believe it should come out of capital. As projectors, I think we have two things to look at. One, is this a wise decision to make? And two, is this the type of projector we want? It's a $500 difference in the units themselves per classroom, which comes out to about $60,000. That's a heck of a lot of money, which I don't think we have. Or I don't think it would be efficient use to use the money. I suggest that we continue to replace the projectors, to budget for projectors that need to be replaced in next year's budget and continue as-is. I do not believe it's wise to take out all this machinery that's working just fine.
I'll ask the question following up on yours. What's the plan for the other 72%? Are we going to scrap them? Are we gonna be selling them or repurposing them?
Typically, the technology department would recycle them with a approved recycler. We do have the ability to put them on a municipal bid website to try and get market value for them as well. We haven't, we haven't decided exactly how we're gonna dispose of them at this point in time.
So if we've, was it 28% not working? Is that correct? Do we have an idea of how many we were at the beginning of the year percent-wise? Because I understand that you've been pulling them from other locations to make, use them, so I, so I'm guessing 28% of rooms don't have them. By this time next year?
Say that our inventory has been depleted, so the, the percentage is just gonna go up a bad and down. We, we try to make it zero by taking the projectors away from less frequently used areas and putting them in more frequently used areas. But ultimately, we've pulled them from everywhere we can to sustain them in the areas that need them the most. And the ones, the ones that are working are not 100% reliable. So they could go at any time. We've, we've seen exponential failure.
What's, what's the life expectancy of the ones we currently have?
Minimum of, oh, what we have now. We have a combination of two different models, one from Ringing Rocks and one from Lower and West. But we've gotten probably four out of the ones from Lower and West and five to six out of the ones from Rocks before they started giving us the trouble that we're experiencing now.
Okay.
So there is that, that period where they start to fail, where you can continue to support them with replacement bulbs and things like that. That puts you well into your fifth year, sixth year, possibly seventh year. But now we're at the point where it's not just bulbs anymore, it's the DLP unit which takes the whole projector out and it's just.
And how long have we had this, these units? Or is that their, or is that what you're saying, it's like four years, five years?
Yeah.
So, because I guess that's, that'd be my question is, 28%, you know, 20, 20% in classrooms. But the question is, you know, by this point, you know, by winter next year, are we gonna be at 52% or 60%? At which case, then we're gonna have to wait until next summer to replace everything. So, I mean, I don't feel comfortable just taking on scrapping when we can sell them off. But, you know, that would be, you know, a fair amount of classrooms without anything next year. Yes, that's, but that's a guess without knowing just, I guess I'd be curious, at the beginning of, like, last year, were you at, you know, 10% that weren't working or 20% that weren't working, just to get some idea of? But I imagine, like you said, it would start to snowball after a certain point. Just trying to get, gave some idea that, that is this a, we have to do this now if we want to get it done? Or come the middle of the school year, we'll have half the classes without? That's what, try to get some information on that.
My concern is very similar to Mr. Parker's because we're looking at something that's being considered a capital expense. And you're repl, you're replacing a projector with a different projector. It's almost that it almost ought to be a maintenance expense. Because it's something you expect, you know, I expect that projector to eventually fail in a reasonable time while I'm still on this side of the grass and be replaced. And that, it's not necessarily a capital item. It might be a, just a maintenance item. So, so my concern is, is, I share Mr. Parker's concern.
The scale of the, the scale of the project was such that, remember from certain events, it puts it beyond that to where we cannot do that ourselves.
Well, yeah, that's a state regulated, yeah, and the state being the state, they're the boss. But, but it's, it's, it's a little hard for me to follow where this fits in in that proj, well, you know, I'll take Jeff's.
The primary reason, Mr. Nipper, as we discussed last time, was the fact that at, almost 50% of the cost of the, of the project is installation. And that installation is not just the installing, but it's also the demolition of the existing system, which is sort of center room and the wires that goes associated with that, and the installation's new. What, what the administration is saying is that going on in the future, they do expect, you know, five to seven years' life out of the system and that they'll have a chance to replace the bulb or maybe even the entire projector unit. But they should not have to reject uniform or replace uniformly the soundboxes or the, the throw unit or the installation. For that reason, this is a capital project ongoing. There may be maintenance costs.
Yeah, and I don't want to go over, because this is something that we talked about in the committee and I don't want to go over it again. Thank you.
Mr. Lindgren, you shared the, the committee's opinion. Do you have a personal opinion, if you don't mind me asking, on the projectors, the integrated projectors and the costs, the high cost?
One of the glories of the committee system is that, is that the committee decides as a committee and the, the chairman of the committee reports out as the committee. So no, I do not have a personal opinion.
I do have a question. For the 28% and which obviously will be increased by the time next school year starts, what is being done in those classrooms to, I mean, what's being done in those classrooms then? Are teachers just working around it without having them or are they scheduled, I mean?
Standalone projectors that we'll wheel in. We don't like to do that because it becomes a safety hazard with cabling and things like that. Some of the areas that are missing projectors are areas like conference rooms and, you know, the library, where we were able to pull from to put in classrooms. Again, that's all part of the trying to make the educational space the most important part or spot and have a working projector in those. So some of the areas that are missing are other areas.
Yeah, ours, ours, it's becoming an issue at West.
And what happens with things like this, with the technology, what we have now, it's not as easy to repair and replace the bulbs and those kinds of things, because the technology is becoming outdated, because technology changes very quickly. We've had to, yeah, we've had to move them around. In several instances, we had to move one, put it back, and then move it again, because they were needed in different spaces. With our new reading and math programs, they both have significant online components that the teachers are using in the classroom, and so without a working projector, it does impact their ability to do those things. And we also, you know, they're being used for the kids all the time, all day, every day. So it, not having working projectors for our, for the teachers is, is a problem.
So I think that...
Sorry. You mentioned that, that projectors were getting pulled from areas that were, you know, basically unused, conference areas, the library. Is there a chance that we don't replace those? You know, save a little bit, I don't know how much that would be, I have no idea, you know, but if there's a conference room, how often are you going to use a projector in there? Or, I mean, and I'm just, like I said, I have no idea how many rooms you're talking about, but it's just a thought.
So...
You know, I'd like to address that briefly, in terms, it's still an educational space, it's just it may not be, for example, where the math and ELA instruction takes place, but it's used in a conference room, or it's used in a library. We're just trying to, when, when push comes to shove, we're just trying to prioritize which space is the most needed space, but we would, we would recommend having them in all those other locations, because they're also used.
Yeah, there's no unused areas, it's just less frequently used, and obviously, we focus on the classroom first and foremost.
That I understand, I'm just wondering if more, if that's more of a want than a need. You know, yeah, it's awesome to have one in a conference room, but do you need it? That's just sort of where I'm coming from. What? Need spare parts, right.
I would just say, yeah, I mean, I think, we've, we've been, batted this around for meeting after meeting now, the, the committee's visited and revisited, and I think what it comes down to is, do we want projectors? If we want projectors, there's a cost associated that we're going to have to accept. Technology advances at an exponential rate, it's a pain in the butt when I have to buy a new computer, because my computer doesn't do the same exact thing that I was doing with it five years ago, it now doesn't do anymore. And it's the same with my iPhone, right? I can't use an app anymore two years later, because they updated it so many times that it takes more memory than my phone has, so I get forced into buying a new phone. It's all part of the plan, it's a big conspiracy, and I think, I think the whole, that's right, whether we like it or not, kicking and screaming, and I'm not justifying, you know, I'm not using that to justify the purchase, I'm just saying, this is the world we live in, it's the situation, if we decide that we want these as a tool, then we have to accept that there's going to be costs associated. And I know we asked, I think the committee asked Mr. Nipper to go in, and I know he did sit in a class session...
Yeah.
To see how the projectors were used, and, and, and he can comment on that as well, if we, if we want to hear that, I'm not sure if the committee did or not, but all I would say is, you know, there's a certain level of planning, and there's a certain level of lessons learned. The last, the first purchase, the one that we're losing now, was our first purchase of this type of projector, and we had a learning cycle there. I know Mr. Cardwell knows very well about, like, total predictive maintenance and all those things, where you try to predict how long things are going to last, and if you, if you want to do things different next time, you know, when you start getting, approaching the end of the usable life for the technology, you stock up on some, you know, high maintenance items and put them on the shelf, so that you maybe pull another year or two on the cheap out of these things, because the fact of the matter is, they continue to do what you need them to do, and then the technology just leaves you behind. So, I mean, if, if the board supports using the tool, then I think we have to support the expense that comes along with it, with maybe some lesson learned, lessons learned planning-wise. That's just my opinion, if, if we're going to use these things, and we're going to have to accept all the undesirable things that come along with it, but does the advantage, you know, does the positive outweigh the negative here, I think? And, and we've been kicking this around, I'd like to bring it to a vote, I know Charles has something he wants to say, and so does Al, but I really think we need to vote on this.
Dr. Schur graciously allowed me to sit in on a class and watch what happened on an elementary school level, because it's been twenty years since my kid, last kid graduated from high school, so they didn't have this when my kids were in elementary school. But it was a very eye-opening per- uh, visit to see what they do with a fourth grader and a projector. And the back of my mind was, if that projector fails, that teacher has a big problem, a bigger problem than you might have if you had high school students or older students, trying to keep the situation under control. So this is something, we can love it to death, and I think, I agree with you, we, I think we should bring this to a vote, and, uh, deal with it. Unanswered questions, there's always going to be unanswered questions. I'd love to know what the annualized cost is going to be, but we're going to have to do something, because the teachers, this is something that teachers need, and they have to have, and it has to be a reliable thing that's operating. It can't be something where I walk in with my fingers crossed and say, "Well, if it, if the projector fails, I'm going to do finger puppets for half an hour." I mean, you know, you have to have something that's reliable and works, and I apologize for dragging this thing out.
Just to clarify, the, um, it's not just a question at this vote of, do we want projectors or not? The projectors we're looking at purchasing are sixty thousand dollars additional, if we're to get the whole, whole package, than the, you know, typical regular projector. It's an upgrade. Second point is, seventy-two percent of our projectors still work, that's all. Any additional questions or comments? All right, so all in favor? Aye? Opposed? No.
Okay, moving on to six point five, portable radio upgrade. We're asking the board to authorize administration to contact, contract, excuse me, with RF Design Integration Incorporated for an upgrade of the district's portable radio system in the amount of forty thousand, one hundred and six dollars and ninety-six as presented.
Do a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? I'm trying to get my screen to switch, sorry, okay. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay.
Six point six is the, the closure of our athletic fund. We're asking the board to authorize administration to close the athletic fund and merge it to the general fund.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? And for, for the sake of the people who may not have the agenda in front of them, I'm just going to summarize here that the athletic fund was a collection of gate receipts, and that was, so people pay admission to get into our events, we use the admission fees to pay the referees. Those fees that we're taking in no longer amount to enough money to, to cover the ref fees. The ref fees go up every year, admission prices really don't, and, and haven't for a long time. So, uh, the motion is to close that athletic fund and just pay the referees out of the general fund, we'll still con- continue to collect gate fees, that'll offset that cost, but it doesn't cover the cost, so there's, since it would always be in the negative, no sense to have the fund.
Quick question, will we be able to track down what's actually coming in from the athletic, to kind of put that aside, just so you can keep track of it? Perfect.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Okay, moving on to six point six.
I'd like to make a motion, will we have six point seven?
In the Western Center budget? Six, six six and six seven?
And six eight, six seven, six eight, yes. Wait a minute, Mike, you're annoying now. I'm all the way up to six ten, if anybody's on board with that.
Let's just go, can we just go through them single, and that way, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, we'll go back to six point seven, board committee calendars. We're asking that the board, we recommend the approval of the committee calendars and school board committee calendars as presented.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? This is just the calendar for next, next year's school board meetings and committee meetings. Won't affect the graduation date.
I do have a question and a possible request.
Uh-huh.
Every year, Matt, you were with us, obviously, on the athletic committee and such like that, we have only four meetings. I'd love to see if we could at least get that fifth meeting in for the winter season, because what we do is, we go right from the spring sport, fall sports, right to the...
Yep.
The spring sports, no winter meeting at all. I'd love to be able to find a way we could fit one meeting in that timeframe.
I mean, I don't disagree, when I, when I first started, we only had two meetings a year, and it was just kind of like an update overview, this is what's going on, and, and I asked for more, and we went to four, just to see if it was enough, but, yeah, I mean, it makes sense to...
At least you have one in every...
...sports season. So...
We, we can, we can do that.
Okay. Well, Gary left, so I say, it's, it's a yes. Eight meetings.
We'll, we'll bring that back for approval.
All right, so you want to, do we need to read? We, we could still approve the school board meeting schedule.
You can approve even the board committee, and add the meeting when you get it.
Okay. All right, so Dr. Schur took the note, and everybody agrees. So let's, let's, uh, make the vote on the calendars, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay, thanks. All right, now we're on to six point eight, which is...
Six point eight is the approval of the Western Center budget, the Western Montgomery Career and Technical Center budget. We're asking the board to approve the eighteen-nineteen budget for the Western Montgomery Career and Technical Center as presented.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Question, my understanding is the original budget called, is now changed, because the original budget had included a three percent increase for the director, I believe. What is the percent increase now, that, that we're seeing different numbers? Do you know?
It's approximately seven point seven five.
So you're, the director's salary is going up seven percent? Or you're saying?
Correct. Or the whole budget?
No. The directors. That, that's the difference.
So it went from three percent to seven percent? All right, is there any feedback on that, or no?
Basically, it was, he was, he was without a contract for almost a year, and this is what they negotiated, we negotiated over there for him.
So it's retroactive?
Yeah, that is retroactive.
Well, not retro, I, I mean...
No, no, he'll, he'll be compensated.
It won't be retroactive, but it's two years' worth of...
Yes.
Increase, okay.
The other thing, the, you know, I'm not suggesting it's good, bad, or different, the other thing the board did is they had the superintendent of record do a survey, as you will, of all the other similar schools, and analyze populations, where they were located, et cetera, and I think the feeling was that this director was misplaced, I don't know if misplaced is the right word, but was not appropriately compensated for his duties and compared to his peers. Again, that's always a judgment, but that, I think, partly went into it right there.
And I, and I will say, when Chris first came in, because I was part of his hiring, our NOCTI tests, which are our state assessment tests, were in the forty percent. We're hitting like ninety percent now. I mean, he has really rolled his sleeves up and really does an amazing job over there. Always thinking outside the box.
Yeah, I would say he sets the bar for his peers when it comes to a lot of that stuff, he's...
Didn't want to lose him either.
He should move closer, though. He should move closer.
So, any other questions or comments on, on the Western Center budget? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? No.
Moving on to six point nine, we're asking the board to approve the MCIU Intergovernmental Shared Student Services Agreement for the eighteen-nineteen school year as presented.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on six point nine? All in favor? Aye? Opposed?
We are, six point ten, the food service budget. We're asking the board to approve the food service budget for eighteen-nineteen as presented.
Do a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Okay, I, I will, I'll just say, this has been a recurring subject, too, throughout this school year and previous school years. It's been a growing concern. I kind of left it to the people who were hearing the feedback, until I started hearing the feedback, but I really do honestly think we should look into the quality and the availability of the, the food at the, at the school lunches. And I, and I, you know, I heard enough of it that I, I did my own asking around and looking into with a lot of different people, and the general feedback is that very often, especially now with the way the middle school handles their lunches, that by the time the last few tables get up, a lot of the options are gone. You know, the qua- I want to say the, the quality, but the appeal of the options that we have are not so great either. So, I don't eat lunch at the school, but I think I've heard from a number of people who do, and I'm not just talking kids, because all kids have opinions, but, you know, mine will eat anything if you dip it in ketchup. That I do know. So, I don't know, I think it's just worth taking a look at, I'm not saying it changes the contract at all, I just think it's something that maybe we want to ask a little bit more about going forward. So, that's, that's just my comment on it. The prices are, I think, the same as they were when I was in school, so can't complain about that. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay.
Moving on to action items for education, we're asking the board to approve the conference attendance as submitted.
Motion in a second on conference attendance. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Action items for policy, we're asking the, the board to approve the revised policies as submitted.
Okay, motion in a second, these policies are two thirty-nine for foreign exchange students, and nine oh six for public complaint procedures. Any questions or comments on these two? Any questions or comments on these two? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay.
Action items for miscellaneous, we're asking, voting delegates for PSBA delegate assembly meeting, we're asking the board to make a motion to appoint a board member and, and another board as delegates for the Pots Grove School Board to, to vote in the PSBA two thousand eighteen assembly.
Okay, it's volunteer time.
Well, actually, I would, I would like to attend these delegates.
Okay. So we have one. Thank you, Patty. It's pretty far out in advance, plenty of time to plan, and it's a one day, it's a Friday. It is. It's in Hershey.
If I can point out, we don't have to send delegates. It's not, it, it's not a requirement. We wouldn't be the only one, I'm sure, not sending somebody.
And we can send one.
Yeah.
Does anybody else want to volunteer for this? Or it's just, okay. Thanks, Mark. Okay, so, delegate. Do we need a motion and a vote on this? Yeah. Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, opposed? Great, thank you.
Moving forward to committee meetings, we had the policy committee meet on April twenty-fourth, and we're going to ask the board to vote to accept the minutes.
Motion and a second to accept the policy committee minutes. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay.
On May eighth, we had a operations and facility committee meeting, and then we're asking Mr. Linger to report out, sir.
Well, we've already voted on most of the things, so. One of the items, of course, was the, was the projectors, we've already voted on that. Another one of the items was the phones and more technologies. Basically, what the idea is, is there was, we had already had a discussion on this earlier, and we'd almost brought it to a vote and action by the board, but we took it back as part of the safety and, you know, conferring with local municipalities, and we got some additional recommendations, and we added some additional repeaters, so that the communic, we tried to eliminate any of the dead zones in terms of not being able to hear effectively from here to there, so that, and increasing the number of units that we were buying drove the price up to about forty thousand, which is still a very small number in comparison with some of the other things. Now, this is part of an ongoing program that we have at Pots Grove, what, it started fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, to, almost twenty years ago, when we started putting in the safety vestibules to, to increase the control coming in, this is just sort of the next step, the SRO was added, but it's just incrementally, we were staying on track, and the cost of what we're doing to stay on track is, is decreasing. This is a forty thousand dollar line item, but I think it's, it's worth every penny to stay on, on track in terms of what we're doing. Another item had to do with changing some equipment, modifying equipment that currently is set up to buy, to, to burn propane, to burn natural gas at the middle school. We ran the line last year, but we didn't finish the connection, we had to do some adjustments, so we're fixing two pieces of equipment, and we're also running the line from the meter to the equipment. So, we authorized that, and I forget what the lump sum amount was, but it was up to ten thousand for one and up to five thousand for the other. So, I think those were the five items that we had, I didn't think there was anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Linger. The athletics and the co-curricular committee met on the fifteenth of May, and we have a report out on that meeting.
Yes, it was a very good meeting. We have a great committee that, on, on the athletic committee, I'm going to start part of it, and the committee's going to finish the other part, we're all in this together, right? So, Mr. Durenzo began the meeting by following up on previous co-curricular meeting. This was the intent to sell tickets at all home events that are played on the turf field. The response from the decline in revenue and ticket sales and additional cost of officials, it was recommended that we sell tickets at all home events beginning spring of two thousand eighteen, but I think that's, should be two thousand nineteen, right?
No, two thousand eighteen, we did it for this year.
Did it this year, that's right, two thousand eighteen, and we will begin publicizing to the public in February. A revenue expense report was presented for discussion, a number of thoughts were discussed, including low attendance numbers, poor public relations, and Pots Grove being the only school in the, in the pack that charged ticket prices during day games. So it's really not a good PR for us. Some of the positives were more season tickets were sold, and we did see an overall profit by the season's end. The committee will recommend that we look for alternative methods to continue to generate revenue, either by additional sponsorships or utilizing markets, street sports, to cover the balance of officials each year. Ticket sales will continue for traditional evening contests, but recommended to stop charging for after-school events. Basically, what was happening is at these events, nobody would go inside the field, they would sit outside, and it wasn't, we were not attracting any students to support for school spirit, because we're charging, so we're going to take care of that. The next thing we did discuss is, Mr. Durenzo provided an update on the Pots Grove Education Foundation five K race and fun run, which was held on Friday, May eleventh. This year was our largest race with over a hundred and fifty runners. Proceeds from the race will benefit the Education Foundation, but we are going to revamp that organization to make a better fit for us. And then I'm going to hand it over to go over the additional rules for eligibility.
So, on the eligibility, first thing I want to make sure everybody's aware of, there is no animosity between anyone on the board or anybody that works in the district, coaches and stuff like that. We're all working as one team to try to make sure everybody's working together for the best of the students. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. It is not like the board wants to do something against the students, or the, the coaches are sitting there and trying to fight with the board, and sometimes that does get a little bit passionate during the meeting and such like that, but in general, what we wanted to do was we were looking to possibly raise the bar a little bit for our, not only our sports students and student athletes, but also for our co-curricular students as well. There's been a time, and I don't think in the history of Pots Grove, that we've actually held the co-curricular students, which would be the drama, the arts, the clubs, to any type of standard, or even the same standard that we hold the student athletes. And we'd like to see maybe possibly changing that into a form. So what we're looking at doing is with, obviously, we have some pilots going out that'll start next year, we want to get all of the details correct, the probationary standard and everything, but we're going to up the bar a little bit for the student athletes first, as in they're going to have to reach a little bit higher than the PIA double A standards, and we'll go through all that, and again, starting next year, they'll all be giving all the details and such like that as we work everything out. But we're also going to start a pilot that's going to include the co-curricular, they won't have to go as high, because it's brand new for them, we don't want to go from zero to one hundred, because they've never been involved in something like that, so we're going to start them off at a lower standard, but we're going to start moving them up so they also have a standard as well. Many on the board, and including the administration and the coaches, all believe that this is a good way to increase the activity for our students, to make sure they're still able to, and be involved in the school efforts and everything like that, but also be able to raise the bar as in get their scores up a little bit higher, so that they're not just trying to get to maybe a basic minimum. We want to see if we can encourage them a little more. So that's all going to start next year, but obviously, the details will be more involved coming out in the summer, and then, of course, coming out in the fall when fall sports starts. There's a lot of details that we still have to iron out. One of the things was, obviously, we're going to start offering tutoring to our athletes and our co-curriculars, so that they can make sure that they're not either in that possibility of ineligibility, or if they reach that ineligibility part, then they would receive tutoring and different things like that, different extra sessions that would then get them back on par. The idea is to get them on par and do everything we can to get them there. Obviously, we've had, we've already saw pilot program that started with the high school, with Dr. Ziegler starting and stuff, with the study hall and stuff. Now, I can't say we're going to do definitely that exact same thing, because like I said, all the details weren't completely ironed out, but they're going to work on everything, and they'll get that all together for the students. They'll have everything ready for them come the fall. There'll be a probationary period, and there'll be a lot of other details that'll come out, so everybody is well-prepared way ahead of time, and we'll make sure that the students are well taken care of and have all the possible ways to make sure they stay eligible.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that committee report. Moving on to ten point four, we have a report from the Curriculum Integration Technology Committee, I had that was held on May fifteenth as well.
Okay, we started out the meeting speaking about the new health curriculum that was proposed. We had quite a bit of input from quite a few board members, and it was decided that, and at Dr. Shirk's recommendation, that the, the teachers and the staff will write the, the curriculum for the, the high school.
Go back to the drama.
Right. Start, start back fresh and find something that's a little more current. The other grades aren't really changing their curriculum that much, so that wasn't really Mr. Voorhees spoke to us about the costs to the K through twelve, the science, and they have saved, managed to save some money by just renegotiating a few times. And then, we did year-end reflections with both curriculum, with curriculum, technology, integration, and special education, and everyone just went over all of the things that we accomplished throughout the year, and what our next steps are going to be, and how they plan on reaching those next steps. And it was just nice to hear some of the things that we had, some of the goals that we had hit, and how we're using some of the, and implementing some of the different tools that we have. And that was about it, so we look forward to seeing what the new health curriculum will be next fall. They'll be presenting it back to us, so, that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Custer.
Can I just make a, a quick one, comment here? Ashley, that, point number three, year-end reflection celebration and celebrations and preliminary visions, I'm not sure if I've seen that in a committee report before, but that is an excellent piece to cover at the end of the school year. I think that's a great idea, you know.
That's not my idea, I can take zero.
Well, I just want to commend whoever put it in there, because that is just such a great way to wrap up at this point of the year, to take a look at what we, what we did, what we accomplished, and celebrate those things and have a vision for what's to come, so, and I'm sorry if I'm saying this now, and you've had it in there for the last three years, I apologize, but I just wanted to comment on what a great way to, to wrap up and, and cover that during a committee meeting, so thanks.
You're very welcome, Matt.
Thanks, Ashley.
Matt, to go for that, we actually, we started that last year, obviously, with Mr. Voorhees. Couple of things that were highlights during that timeframe, just so you know, where obviously, one of them is being our Apple designation is now broken down into each individual schools versus the entire district, and that application is being put out, and we expect we're going to receive now Apple designation for our multiple schools. The other object that we discussed also is going to be about the, the leases for these computers are up, and we made sure that they're going to make sure everything is taken care of for our students over the summers that are going to be giving them back and everything like that. So there was a lot of areas, especially special education, all the items that they did in special education with working with the Pots Grove Village and working with the community and such, it was a lot of very good information during that part.
Okay, we're going to move into new business, then. We can go around the table if, yeah, no, go ahead, I'll, we'll start at your side.
All right, I'll start. For anybody, obviously, anybody that's been here, and of course, our little camera and stuff, you'll see in the front, we got a little congratulations to the class of two thousand and eighteen poster board there. Now, that's actually from our PTSA, as in they created about, a couple of years ago, we started having what's called Commitment Day. I want to commend PTSA and Dr. Ziegler for starting that a few years ago and such like that. There's an exciting time for the parents and students to actually come to the school and actually go over about all the different schools that they're going to be going to in the fall. Involved in this is not, and this, obviously, we try to list as many as we can, but we don't have probably everybody on there, I'm sure there's going to be some we're missing, but we have culinary students, we have the technology students, we have colleges, we have the military being represented by all our school, students. It just simply shows how much dedication the students have made to making this happen, but it also should go a huge thank you to the administration, to the administrators, the teachers, and the aides, and every single person that's involved in helping those students get to that point. Yes, they had to go through the hard work, but if it wasn't for our teachers here at this school, and the administration, the school board, and everybody else that puts the effort in making sure these students are ready for those jobs in those schools, they wouldn't get there either. So I want to say thank you very much to everybody who's done that. This year alone, from my understanding, when you include the senior awards banquet, it's going to be over one point four million dollars of scholarship and, and money that they've earned to go to those schools. So I want to make sure everybody, a big thank you for that as well.
If I can just piggyback off that really quick, I was there, because sadly, that's the last program I will be attending with my daughter, other than graduation, but it was done so well, and I happened to have the pleasure of being there the first year that it was done, two years ago, with my son, and, you know, the, the turnout then was, you know, it was a little light, I guess you'd say, and it was just, when I walked in today, walked in the last Friday, it was awesome. I mean, their tables were filled, tons of parents there, it was just really nice to see, and, and I just thought it was done amazingly well, it was well organized, and the kids had a great time, and the parents enjoyed it, and I can't wait until, you know, next year and the year after, when it just gets bigger and bigger. I think it's fantastic.
Tomorrow's a celebration night for the Western Center, we have senior recognition at our middle school, which we're fortunate to have it this close to home, and tomorrow's a, a big night for all of our kids, and I'm really looking forward to it, I'll be speaking, and they'll be getting all their certifications, and, I mean, these kids, sometimes I don't think we realize, I mean, they are already have a resume built by the time they graduate. They are ready to go, because we give them all the tools they need, and there are a couple of kids that I got to meet where I get my hair done, but she's already certified as a beautician, and she's coming out, right out of high school, and she's certified. So, so it's a great night to see all the kids get their accolades, and sometimes I hear the kids say they would rather have this their graduation than come back to the home schools, because that school means so much to them, they've learned so much, and the bond they have with their teachers is amazing, so if you want to come, have a good time, we're there from seven to nine tomorrow.
I just, Matt had brought something up during the meeting that I think, I just have this thing, a pet peeve, when one of us brings up an issue, I think we owe that person some discussion, whether we agree with it or not, not to just put it out there and it go away. So, Matt, you brought up about food and, you know, the cafeteria services. I think it's wise, however often, that we review things like that, such as transportation, as we did earlier this year. as we did earlier this year. I had hoped that the class pictures would be looked at, which they won't, they're not going to be, I guess, but food.
That's part of my new business.
Oh, good. Thank you. Food services, I don't know the last time we reviewed that, but it would be interesting to see what the options are. If they're the best, then we stick with it, you know. But I don't know, that's my thought. If there's other thoughts, if we could give Dr., Mr. Nester some direction.
We have, we are required by state, by the state to go to RFP for food service management companies every five years. In the intervening years, we signed a one-year contract with the ability to renew for four years and then we go out to bid. So we've been renewing this and I'd have to check my schedule on when, when the bid comes up. But Chart Wells has been with us since before I came here, probably well before that, and they've always been very responsive. If, if we have any specific concerns, we have a couple of representatives from Chart Wells here in the audience, but if you have specific concerns, please convey them to me and I'll pass them on to, to them and try and get a response back for you.
May I, I do actually have a question. The menu that I saw on there, are we given, is there any sort of choice that the staff here makes as far as, you know, Chart Wells gives us an option of like 20 different meals and we say, okay, these are the 15 we want to use, or is it always, I mean, I'm just curious how that works?
One of the, one of the services that Chart Wells provides is they provide a food service manager. Her name's Cindy Hance and that's her job is to decide of, of whatever. They, they have a dietitian, nutritionist, whatever you want to call it, that develops new meal possibilities for the company and then she chooses how to integrate the meals into the, into our schedule based on how they sell. Quite frankly, you know, if it's not a popular meal, it may not be offered as much. But that's, that's part of the service that the food service management company provides to us.
Is this a reflection moment?
New business.
New business? Okay.
Reflections.
Well, I just want to, I just want to thank both the members of the administration. I'm a newbie and I'm still a newbie. The members of the administration and the faculty that I've met for the support and the assistance I've gotten in the past year. And I also want to thank the rest of the board members for your help and cooperation and patience. So that's the end of my reflection.
Something I do would like, I would like to bring up. Last night, the middle school had their choral concert and the, it was, so it was wonderful. Mrs. Bean went up at one point and explained that even though earlier this week she had fractured her arm, they put a special brace on so she could still play the piano. And then I think the third from the last song, the power went out, but amidst, you know, some pause and then switching to regular piano and then with the help of many people and their cell phones and flashlights, they continued and did a fantastic job even with all that. It was fantastic, even, you know, persevering under that as well, it just, the students and Mrs. Bean, I thought were all amazing, so just sharing that.
It was. It was. It's no wonder high school choral concerts are so wonderful. They start some grade and.
As, as a very nice segue into the middle school music program, last year, the middle school music department had put in two major impact requests as part of their budget process that we could not honor in the, in the budget last, for the current year. One was for a set of timpani at the middle school for about $6,700 and the other was for a set of new sound shells that sit, stand behind the performers to reflect the, the sound outward. We've been meeting, I've been meeting with the music department throughout the year to try and identify what the real need is versus what the want is and, and trying to come up with a solution to the issues. And we've come to kind of a tipping point where we, I think we need to move forward on some of these things and I think we have a nice compromise in, in the process. The timpani set, which costs about $6,700, we're proposing to be purchased through the educational foundation. They have a $5,000 education improvement tax credit money, grant that has come to us, donation that has come to us that has to be expended by the end of the year. So that, that would contribute to the $6,700 and I think they could pick up the remaining $1,700 through the education foundation. The, the sound shells were the, were the most costly. They were anticipated to be in excess of $20,000. And through working with the, with the music leadership, we, we reduced the quantity and we found a more cost-effective option for these, which happens to be the same product that we have in the high school. So rather than proposing an expenditure of $20,000, we're asking for a, an expenditure of $12,815 to provide sound shells for the middle school. And I think we have capacity in our current year budget to do that.
The only concern I have is I know those shells at the middle school and the shells are so important for music. They're, without them, I mean, that's a tool. That middle school stage, because I got to see it yesterday, is a lot bigger than the high school stage, so I really don't want us to cut short the middle school shells to kind of make it fit. I want it to fit all the way across. Like if we're going to invest in it, might as well do it all.
They will have more shells than the high school has at this point.
They need it because they have to be the stage.
Actually, the, the width of the stage is within a couple of feet.
You have to be a meathead shell for that.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to point that out. Are we motioning the tech?
If you are inclined to do so, I think they would be thrilled with it. Otherwise, I would recommend putting it on.
So moved. I make a motion that we, we, yeah, that we get the shells for the music department.
Okay.
And the timpani, yeah.
Okay, so we have a new motion on the.
Actually, the timpani don't need to because that's a separate board.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're just on the shells.
Just the shells.
We want to make sure that the shells are going to fit. Like if we're going to do it, I want to make sure.
Yeah, because he said that other stage is just a few feet larger and they're going to actually have more shells, which would cover that extra few.
Okay, well, I've been here, I just, just want to make sure that we get what we want to.
It's less than what they asked for, but they've agreed to, this is acceptable.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm glad we went through the exercise of doing it the right way, which is not what we did last year and everybody recognized that. We were too late in the process and all that, so thanks for staying on top of it. Now, we, we did the right thing and found the right compromise. It doesn't even sound like a compromise, we just found the resources, so thanks. So this is a new, kind of unplanned for motion, so I'll open the floor for public comment before we take a vote as well. Does anybody have, feel, want to make public comment on this motion?
I was going to make public comment. I appreciate it if you bid for it. I'm Kathy Williams, I was the band director there for seven years. That stage, the acoustics on that stage are terrible and that, the band shelf that's there, I think is 50 or 60 years old already. So if you could get the new band shelves, I think they'd love them and as many as you can afford, I think they'd be thrilled with. They don't, whatever you have in mind.
Thank you. Any, any other comments or questions? Great, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Want to thank the board. Usually we don't, we like to give you a little more insight, but I broke, broke the rule, so thank you. Dave Nester actually broke the rule, but I, I knew he was going to break the.
Success.
He asked, he did ask me if he could break the rule, so I said it was okay. I just wanted to get back, I know a couple of months ago, Mr. Parker brought up about our, our, our pictures that we, that we have in our, our different buildings and specifically Life Touch. I had an opportunity to, to meet with all the administrators regarding Life Touch and the services they, they provide. You know, currently, the high school is under contract with Life Touch. They are very happy with the services that they offer, especially with the quantity and the things that they do regarding the senior year especially. There's a lot of things to do and Life Touch has the volume and the capacity and the personnel to maintain that. The middle school just re-upped their Life Touch. They were again, once again, happy with, with the services that were provided. A lot of different mural type pictures were given, posters, signage, anytime they need anything, they were very, very accommodating to the, to the middle school. Working our way back to Lower, Dr. Williams was not happy with Life Touch and she's in the process of, of looking for a new vendor at, at Lower. She felt that, you know, the needs weren't met, so she's going to go out and rebid, rebid the process. Mrs. Kohler and, and, and Mrs. Jones, respectively, at the K-2 buildings, again, had current, have current contracts with Life Touch and are currently happy with the products that, that they produce in Life Touch and, and the, the quality that they, they provide. So I wanted to, to share that out with the board.
Thank you for that. Were the question, were the parents asked about their opinions, the customers? Because I've heard of quite a few that were unhappy without really doing any type of formal survey.
When I spoke with the building administrators, they, they did not mention any parent complaint specifically. We did discuss, we did discuss, discuss that point as, as the product, the value and any concerns with your building, staff, students or parents. So that wasn't brought to the forefront, you know, with, with that. Again, one of the things that, you know, I always, I think those pieces, if there are parents who are concerned about anything that we do, then we need to let our building administrators know so that they can address it, if they can solve it, great. If not, just work it way up because I think it's important that we, we hear that and know that, but we need to hear it to address it. So, thank you.
This is a situation I, I would call out specifically to, to point out to parents that Facebook discussion page is not the best way to communicate to your school that you have an issue. It's a good way to get everybody up in arms and do nothing about it. So for the, for the people that have taken to Facebook to make the complaints, and I didn't, even though I agree with the complaints, because I know where to go if I have an issue, I would say for, for, for people on the board that interact with those pages, that this quick suggestion in cases like this should always be to get in touch with your schools. Because I've never, and I'll, and I've been in this district for the, for the entire school process for, for all of my kids up to this point, and there's never been a time, and I will qualify that by saying long before I was on the school board, so I don't assume that that's the reason I get quick response. I always got quick and effective response when I contacted the schools. So even if, you know, from a small issue to a large issue, I've always gotten response from the people at, at the schools at every level, teachers, administrators, secretaries and everyone. So that's the place to go and I would suggest, you know, instead of fanning the flames, that we make those recommendations because here we are with administrators who haven't gotten that feedback and I wouldn't expect them to be, you know, scanning Facebook to find out what everybody's concerns are. They're, they're waiting for a phone call or, you know, an email or anything like that. So I would definitely voice my concerns that way, but I think this is just one of those examples where there was a lot of feedback there I saw and probably not any of the right people know about it, other than us coming and saying what we heard, which is fine, but it's better to hear it from the, directly from the, the parent or whoever with the issue. Because I'll say, you know, I just got mine, my spring pictures and the, the basic package is 50 bucks. That's a lot of money if the, you know, the hair's sticking up like this and they didn't even bother to give it a nice little swoosh before they snapped the picture, so. And you don't get really a second chance, so you know, give them the feedback and then maybe Life Touch will make, make the adjustments too.
Absolutely.
You don't have to find a new vendor, you just have to get them to address the concerns if they know about them. Give them the, give them the opportunity, so. Yeah, I have one other thing, this is just board, board business, but everybody should have gotten this. I know we made a motion and we voted, but every one of you needs to, sorry about that. Check yes for your vote and, and sign and put your district and, and give it back to Lori so that they have the official record. That's for the MCI, or would it be to you, Ashley?
I don't know. A bunch of people gave them to me.
Okay. It's an X, it's an X on your signature, so before you, before you leave tonight. Thanks.
That's a signature, that's nice. No, that doesn't fly.
We make our mark.
Yeah, make your mark. That's good.
Any other new business? All right, Demolge, you're in the meeting. Thanks, everybody.
That I had with my son when we did it and, you know, it was just, it's nice to look back on that.
To piggyback off of yours, it is definitely something that the parents probably enjoy as much, if not more than the, than the students, getting to go out there and have pictures and such. And I did speak to P.